Okay.
And then we'll get the, we'll get the, we'll get the, uh. The, the reporting.
Okay, let's go on.
Okay. It is seven eighteen, I'm gonna call to order the special meeting of the Dango Board Director Tuesday two fifteen through September sorry, seven fifteen and seven eighteen. We have one number on Zoom running in maybe in a minute, and you can do stuff out there in my room. The thing, our little board chair next to me is.
Molly Dickinson, who was a county board member.
In the room is Superintendent of Schools.
Mark Tucker.
And Dave Toll, can you introduce yourself as the other board member here?
I'm here.
Dave Toll is here as well, he's online, so that's why we're introducing ourselves. Uh, before we go forward, um, I've got to add one thing to the agenda. Uh, I'd like to add one thing to the agenda, please ladies, um, specifically, I would like to add, uh, on you citing one VSA three thirteen for executive session. I, I would like to add, um, evaluation of a public officer employee. Please, and I would need a motion to do so. I'll put that in after, so I have a motion on that, and we got second, second in the room. So we're motioning to add an executive session for one VSA thirteen three. Uh, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries on that. And now the business of the night is, we received an email on Thursday morning, uh, from the superintendent that there was an error in the district warning, and we're here to talk about how that happened, why that happened, and what we have to do about it, and what position this puts us in the community. And, um, I'd like to start, Mark, just, this is disappointing, and this is frustrating, and my, my feeling with the board is that we are disappointed, and we are frustrated, and we have some questions. They have some questions for me that I can't answer, so there may be some questions for you here. And, um, I understand that we also saw, we saw the document. Um, there's a point in the video, I have, I went through the timeline, I looked at the timeline in a minute, where you tell us, this is, this information is not correct on here, I will fix it, and then we never actually see that document again, where we're in a workspace.
Right.
And we just, we count on you to fix these things, we count on you to put, you and finance department to put correct documents in front of us, and you did not do.
That's right.
And that is why we find ourselves here.
Yep.
And so I was hoping that you could please talk us through how you found this out, talk us through specifically why at the meeting last week, you did not bring this to our attention, and then talk about the steps that we have to do to remediate this.
Okay, so, the first question, how did you find out about it? Um, something's been, uh, in, during the processing for the TAN, reached out to Michael and questioned it, because they kept all of our documents. Something said, well, you, you submitted an, an application for a TAN, but noted this level of spending, and that's not what was on, that's not what we voted by the town, what happened? So that's when we first realized that something, that something was wrong. Um, as far as why I didn't mention it at the board meeting, uh, last Tuesday?
We, we made it a regular meeting last Tuesday.
A regular meeting, yes, I was still trying to figure out, what do we do about it? And I understand why somebody would say, well, you know, why didn't you just tell us as soon as you knew? But my practice has always been not to just bring a problem to the board and say, oh, we got this problem, but I don't know what to do about it. I was in the, as soon as I found out that something had happened, I started a process with our attorney to figure out, how do we cure this? That's actually the technical term for it, how do you answer the mistake? And I didn't have all the answers to them. So, I did get it the day after the board meeting, and it should have been Wednesday, and I drafted that memo. Um, I initially sent that memo just to you, and the reason that I did it, and Dave Toll's on the meeting, and I'm gonna say in front of the board, is I just sent it to you initially, because David just lost his dad. And I wanted you to see it, and I wanted you to let me know if it was when, and if it was okay to share with the full board, given Dave's circumstances. So I was trying to be sensitive to where he was and what he might be going through. And then your response to me was send it to the board immediately, which I did a couple hours after, and you got it on your first line. What was the third question? What do we do?
It's, yeah, the, the, the third question is gonna be what we do, is, is, is we're gonna start talking about that, but I wanna pause here. Do you guys have any questions at this point about where we were? I, I feel like the problem is big, that should, this shouldn't wait, we should know, because this is, we don't exactly have a solution now. The solution is,
Well, yeah.
We have, we have a long path to a solution. I don't feel like waiting for it to be fixed.
Okay.
Except being in the face of all the spending that we were signing off on, on that day, even though that came from understrated funds, even though that spending came from elsewhere. It, um, that's the kind of thing that will raise questions.
Right.
Were you, did you intentionally with all this to get the spending passed?
No.
I know you didn't, but that, there's that, that's the sort of question that possibly exists.
Okay.
And that's, that's the sort of thing that, that, it, it feels like whenever information is brought right to us, that maybe we are hiding it. And we don't wanna be hiding things, and one of the things that I, that we were able to do here, because we try so hard to be transparent, is go back through the videos and watch the videos, and in a minute, I'll talk you through the timeline of exactly when you made the error, and exactly why you made the error.
Right.
And, and we have the videos to back it up in addition to the minutes, so we are, um, I can explain it, but I can't explain it to five hundred voters one at a time, which is kind of what I need to do.
Okay.
I kinda need to put my hat in my hands here, ask the other board members, and say, are superintendents supposed to check this, the finance director's supposed to be a part of this, and some lady at the bank told us.
Right.
Months later, and the lady, lady at the bank is not just supposed to be telling me this is wrong with finance.
Right, absolutely right, every, I don't disagree with a single point of that. The only thing that I would respectfully ask you to consider, consider is, if I come into the meeting and said, we have a problem, but I don't know what to do with it, you, are you saying to me that that would have been better than waiting to know what we do about it? Because that, there was no intent to, to hide anything from anybody, but, you know, my practice with this board and every other board is when I communicate things, I don't just say, oh, we got a problem, I don't know what to do. I think my responsibility is say, we have a prob, whatever that problem is, and here is, here is what I think we need to do to fix it, or here are some ideas about how we fix it. So that I'm giving you the information that you can reflect on to take action, so, um, it's just, and, you know, tired, you said I'm tired about timelines and board meetings, or what's been warned, and things like that. I made that decision when I first signed up, and I have to get to the bottom of the solution as opposed to coming in and just saying, well, I don't know what we're gonna do, because then you were, you know, that would have been disruptive and upsetting too. Uh, it was a judgment call, I take responsibility for the mistake, I take responsibility for making that judgment call, it is like how I handle problems with boards.
I had a lengthy conversation with one of our legal consultants, Chris Leopold. I presented this exact situation to him, and I said, is this moment that I'm interhandled? And he said, normally a superintendent does not bring a bothering about solutions, we're all about proposed solutions, so, it matches with what, um, tends to be, with, with what tends to be the practice in superintendent's, or one of our attorney films.
Right.
He does say, if you called here, they had a solution for you, then you did.
Wow, okay, so we have, I was working with our other attorney, and, and, I gave, I was, I was working with our other attorney, felt that, you know, I had this, that's, having this talk.
So, yeah, like I said, case, if that, I think if that had come to us, and then, again, you said anything, I guess they've done it on the morning, I think we probably paid everything else on that. I think we paid everything else on that agenda that night.
Oh.
And we say, that's, I think that our solution would have been, everything's solved, until we figure this out. So that's what I, if you would have brought that to us, I'd say that, we as a board would have said, this is the apartment.
Okay.
So that's how.
Point taken, I, I, like I said, I made a judgment call, and then.
Okay. And so that's where we are, um, I'd like to just briefly walk everybody through the timeline of what happened, because like I say, I keep speaking, uh, to Mark this morning, and, and, can you figure out where, um, where did that, where, where did, what did it do, where this didn't happen? And in, who is this the fault of, and so I went back through the January tenth board meeting, was the second board meeting that we had. And this is, so this is the video from January tenth, you can find it on our website, and in about twenty eight minutes, we've just finished with the budget, we just agreed on the actual budget number, which is a seven point six million, it's supposed to be on the morning. And then, once that is done, you pulled out the template for the warning. And in the template for the warning, you're, you're, you're lining up this one, you're lining up this one, you're lining up all the parts that you said, and I have to fix four. And then you said, if you give me a minute, I will fix four. And then we were waiting a minute, and I asked you a question, that, I said, I think that we need to have, I have on the, um, warning the election of, um, treasurer.
Okay.
And so then, at that point, you said, oh, I didn't know that, I have to check on that, so I can't finish this tonight, and the other, and we paid for that night.
Okay.
You had circled it on the, on the thing, you said, we'll come back tomorrow, we had a meeting of the building committee the next day, the building committee had, um, you, you weren't ready at that point, that question hasn't been answered, so we didn't see you then, the next time that we saw you was January twenty fifth, again, virtual, again, you're not the same wing of the books. And this is the thing that I was, I meant, you're not the same one like us, and you're on a screen in the cafeteria, and we're in a room, and forty people in cafeteria, trying to graph, and this document is not in our face, and this document is not gonna get in the document, it's funny, you know, but you can't see the document, and the changes that you're making are, um, elsewhere. And so we went, and this wasn't changed in the, in the, in the brief one, you see it, it still wasn't, this is the one that we rushed to the, um, the next day, we argued all, all we could, and signed it off, and we got it back wrong, because we didn't have question seven, question eight on. And so then, the question seven, question eight on, we all had to come back in here at five forty-five one night, to rush to getting it, and put it in front of us, and we were doing the question seven, question eight, and at that point, it sat in front of the rest of us all wrong, the four of us wrong. And it's right there in front of us, and we all looked at it, and we all said fine, and we all signed it. So at that particular moment, we are culpable, but the board is also culpable in signing the document that was wrong. There was a fifteen minute meeting, there's no video of that one. Um, it was a quick one, and we didn't take a video, there's no video of it. So, that was a, that was just, that was an in-person only meeting. And so that is the timeline. Of one of the things that, that, that was concerning during that time, and this is a factor in your life, is that you're working largely remotely. And so you weren't hands off on this, and you had some other things going on in the personal life, and I would say that it might have affected your work, and I'll say in this case, that it helped we did. So, it, it is what it is, but I'm.
Yeah. Now, I, look, this is the biggest mistake that I've ever made in my professional life, I'm not gonna try to circuit color it, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna try to say, wow, you know, it's not the end of the world, or anything, it's, it's a bad mistake. I am, as I said in my memo, I am ultimately accountable for getting that warning in the right order for the board to sign, it is my mistake, I own, I own that. Mike and, Mike and I have talked about this, we probably spent over the, you know, the last couple weeks, a couple hours trying to, how did this happen, what did we miss, we have a system in place for checking and cross-checking and everything, where did that break down? We can't figure out where that piece of it broke down, it's not that kind of stuff. Sometimes that happens in the meetings, and sometimes it happens outside of the. It obviously didn't happen in the meeting, because Mike wasn't at those meetings.
So Mike was at none of those meetings?
He was, he was at none of those meetings.
None of those meetings, he was at the first budget meeting where we, where we, where we, where we had not agreed on. So then, it's like, we passed, when we had the next meeting, in person, or virtually, he wasn't at the next meeting, first, unfortunately, and he was not at the January twenty fifth meeting, the very last one that we, so.
And January twenty fifth, was that the one where we ultimately amended Article Four to take out that extra language?
No, that was, that was done on, you took that out on January eleventh, oh, no, January twenty, so that.
Cause we approved and signed the warning once, and then we pulled it back, and.
Yeah, so on January twenty fifth, we pulled out the language about less people standing. And we were, we were not, the revision for that, we needed visual on computer, the numbers above were wrong. And we were, we were looking at the highlighted section on the screen in our cafeteria. And so, but it was then at, on February the first, that we came in here to add Article seventy.
Okay.
And then Article seventy, we made the assumption that the rest of the document is correct, and we improved it, and so we put the law order on the front.
Yeah.
And, can, stop now, Dave, does anybody have any questions here, other than just the recounting of the facts? There we go, move on, um, he, he, sorry.
Um, so if I was to, was to read what I signed, I would have seen that it was wrong. On, on February the first, only on February the first, not on January the twenty fifth, when we moved to it, to when the meeting was posted, I said, who would see this issue? Um, because I'm the document, the document that we signed, the wrong number on it.
Yes. But we actually did a town court, I think, yeah, it was, you were, I mean, you were cutting it out to get this in on. But that, let's go.
So, training, training opportunity.
Right, again, this is.
The thing that's, I'm having a hard time with, I was double checking everything for a while, and Mark, you know, I was just doing that.
Yeah, you did a good job of it.
And I'm like, I missed it, and I thought that the date was wrong on it, and I understand using an old template, and I think to me, it seems like there have been several careless mistakes, typo kind of things, that I I don't, to me, I just wanna know how we can fix it, and what we're gonna do so that we don't have errors happening at all, and that's, you know, I think I don't wanna have to be spending so much time, I can stop doing that, I don't wanna have to go back and do that, I will, but I feel like there needs to be some sort of system in place where we know we're getting accurate information, and I don't have this sense of, of feeling like I have to check everything that comes, I mean, this was us, we should have, we should have seen that number, I mean, that's, that's us, but I, I, that's the feeling I have, and I know other, others feel that way about the, this is the financials coming out.
It's, it's, I've never, I've never, I.
Okay, on, um, in October, the meeting of the budget meeting for CCSU, she's an alternate, she came on on the day after, because looks to be available, there was a spreadsheet that was, that she got in two in the afternoon.
I was missing some.
It had a blank, it had a, I think, she pointed out the error of the email, and then I walked in the room at five twenty, and you asked her what she thought. And Mike was on, Mike was on the thing, he said, what did she talk about? And I walked right up to the screen, and I pointed right to it, because I, because it took me, my time to find it, it took her, and there was a hidden line on the document that made ten thousand dollars payments.
Right.
And that's, and, and then the rest of the meeting, you're having to present with this document that has this error.
Right.
And so that is a careless error. Um, a less careless error, generally, it's the high, high profile error that, that was me.
Okay.
Is a tax, is presenting the, is, and, and presenting the wrong numbers for the taxes to the advisory committee, and then when that came to the question, telling the advisory committee that they shouldn't be considering numbers for. That error got compound. That error got compounded, because then people started questioning things. Other people came to you and said, can we look at some other documents that asked, who was on it? He said, why are you asking? Public documents.
I don't remember that.
Mary B, so that, Mary B, he asked her some documents about, um.
She, she, she asked, she asked us, asked us to give her the live spreadsheets of the different budgeting, pre-dump release.
Right, but, but, but she asked for some other documents, so you couldn't give me the dead documents, and then you contacted me, and it was one, and said, give her, give her, give it spreadsheet, please, give her, there are any blood, hey. And so, eventually you did, yeah.
Okay.
And so, but, just the, just the, I, the, the, that was a major error, this is an extremely major error, in the meantime, there have been some minor errors. And so, we sort of see a pattern from the finance department, and we sort of see a pattern from your office, as a result, that we would like addressed. And we would like, we would just, we, we would like to trust your numbers.
Okay.
And currently, we do that.
Okay.
And that is.
And I think for me, it's like, in addition to that, it's just feeling the confidence that if something comes up, it's knowing that we're gonna know it as soon as possible, um, so that we can work together to figure it out, and not feeling like, you know, days are going by, I realize you weren't intending to hide anything, you were working towards a solution, but just like that confidence of knowing that, trusting that you're gonna bring things to us as soon as they've been brought to you.
Well, that's, that's an easy fact, because I won't, I won't do that again. Um, and then we'll, you know, and then, you know, we'll go through the processes, you know? I guess, to be honest, part of this is like, I don't, I don't like telling you guys that I don't know how to fix them. So I, maybe that's my ego, I, I think it's my professional ego, not my personal ego, because I don't have a problem admitting when I make mistakes. But from a professional perspective, it's my job to advise you, not just to say that something's wrong, but this is what we have to fix. So, that's what went through my head, it's like, and, and I was, you know, and I was on this with, you know, I didn't, I didn't, I use Chris Leopold for labor laws. Stuff, I don't use, I don't use his term for anything but that. And I went to, uh, papers, and I, you know, got a couple, John too, he's, he's worked with us. And he delivered to me this afternoon, proposed language for the, um, for the, for the warning to practice, and, you know, it's appropriate to go over it, and I.
So, yeah, I understand, I understand that, how, how you got, what you got, and it left me also with Chris Leopold, who I have a relationship with, that I could then talk about this from the, from the perspective of, of this board, so gave me an opportunity to talk to him, and I used his, you know, his confidentiality, to talk myself through this, and to come to a, an understanding of probably why you did what you did, and, um, he's, it's a, then read through a situation and to, to get an idea of the situation, and the, the size of the error is not, um, normal, but this kind of error has happened. And so we just have, now have to own it, and we have to play it. And we have to figure it out.
You mean in other, in other places?
In other places, I've got, in other, in other places, this, these, these things come up, and, and so it's something that we want, and then to fix it. And so we have to figure out how to fix it with our community, and keep their trust, and we gain their trust, because we're, we're, we're here to be trusted, we're here to check, to check your work, and we, we get failed, we get there, and we fix it.
Yep.
And, um, so, if I stop there, if anybody had anything else to say about that, I wanna move on to solutions.
Right.
Okay. So, if we move on to solutions, uh, the solution that, that we were looking at here, the cure is, uh, the, the proposed cure is listed in your letter here. And is this similar to the action? I wanna get, um, once we get to the cure, we can then get to, um, how we start the conversation with Penny. So, if you, what's on the other show, can you show us how we're gonna do? I have been, like, we wanted to do that.
That would be helpful, yeah.
This, this is just how I pulled it out.
It's been two documents, and I can borrow. So, I don't need a screen share, this because there's nobody online. This is, this is what he proposed, uh, for language. And we're gonna double check these numbers, something two times. Um, and take a minute to read that.
So this brings me to a question that I'd like you to answer, and it is very specifically, the state has our budget. Our budget was approved by the state, our budget, specifically the budget for seven million, six hundred nine, three ninety seven.
That is what you sent into the agency. That is gone, that's the one through their cycle of however they distributed and put in the town for, for tax billing purposes. Um, what, if, if this were not fixed, we would get this money from the Ed Fund, but not be able to spend all. So this is literally giving additional authority to spend that, or authority to spend that additional nine hundred seventy two thousand, six hundred. We can't deficit spend to solve this. Because you can't plan, it's against the legal plan, the deficit spending, so we have to get this additional authority.
I like that explanation better, what's up there.
It's, this is what we have to say, this is what we have to say officially, what we have to say to each individual that, that we see.
But, but everywhere else in the book, it shows this three point six, it's a difference, either your tax rates, and everything, it's just the ballot, and that letter that we signed.
The, the piece of paper, yeah, the piece of paper in the warning, and then the piece of paper that they scribbled the yes or no on. Those are the two things, the states are, the state has, and this is what you guys don't know yet, I wanna mention that you know, the state has our numbers, the state has our budget, the state has our tax rate that we all, that we all agreed on. So, this is just to get right with being able to spend the money that we get.
Right.
Otherwise, we probably have to, if, if they say, you don't have to try again with the same exact action, basically. Because we can't, there's not random dollars or cut it without, we, we, we've been doing it without being sued nine times, whether.
No.
There's, there's no, there's no way to do that, we can't, so, um, this is what we have, and so the, so the message in this case to the, to the voters is, all that was wrong was the piece of paper that we voted on, the budget, that's right, the budget we defended, the budget we took, and we met, and we showed it to people at that first meeting, and then twenty people at the next meeting, and then all the people in front of town hall, the numbers that go up in front of, in front of, um, the people at the, that town meeting, it would have said seven point six oh nine million, but on the warning, it said the wrong. And so, the cure is just to, is to have the town agree to extend the additional nine seventy two, that we're all again. And we take our hats and put them on our hands, say this to you.
Fair, fine question, so to somebody who didn't attend one of the previous sessions, just came in to vote, they're looking at the, the ballot, they're seeing that six million number, and have not heard the seven million prior to that.
Right. It was in the newspaper, it was in the budget report of the town report, not on page two of the town report, but on page eight of the town report, or whatever, where the budget is detailed out, the seven point six million exists. In the letter that I wrote, or on our behalf, it says that seven point six million, in the letter that Mark wrote, it says, it talks about education, it's gonna be, it references this one, in the minutes of our meetings, it says the seven point six million.
So ample opportunity for the faculty to see their current.
The, but the argument that they never saw, is valid.
Some people say, I, I didn't do that, I just walked in, I voted, and, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, in all of the, you know, the illustrations that we did of the, the tax impact of this budget, always like, were based on a seven point six million dollar number. Uh, so the projected tax rate is based on that, and it's not changed, it's the last thing that the article says, it does not change the tax for, for the voters. It doesn't impact, you know, for those of us who vote solely on, or pay taxes solely on, uh, property value, it doesn't change the, doesn't change my tax bill. It doesn't change their tax, so, and for anybody, frankly, who's income sensitive, it would, it would, it would never change anything, so, I mean, because income sensitive people pay on a different scale, I mean.
Okay, now?
No, we're gonna understand that.
No, I know, we're gonna have to, it's.
It is. Hitching up for her comment, where people were gonna come in, but didn't vote during, um, that didn't vote during that town meeting, they, they were, they were gonna have this in front of them, and they were gonna go.
Right, and if, and again, if there's, if, if, if they think for a second, they were doing something unattended, then.
Yeah.
It doesn't go wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have a percentage of the original voters, do we have a percentage of approval, or total, number of total voters?
If five people show up as the go-bout.
I don't know, you know, that's.
Is that question answering?
Like, if the five of us are the only ones that go in and vote, or.
Oh, I don't know, I've never, I've never thought about that, because I never managed to. Uh, I think that the vote is whoever votes.
So, we would like for you to, uh, source that one up, to get us that information, if any.
Five percent on petition to get in front of the.
Or do you need to leave half the registered voters to vote, I mean.
I'm gonna get that high. It might be, I don't know, we wouldn't have that. I don't think it's tied to, you know, the, the rules around, if you wanna do petitions, that they're five percent of the, uh, of, if you wanted to do a re-vote, you'd have to have five percent of the rest of the voters.
Yeah, I think we need to know that, I think that we would like to know that, um, with you calling lawyers, and me calling lawyers, and, but what did this mistake cause, it's like, you know, I mean, like, just some, some sort of an idea, with the vote, then it's all, like, how much money did you burn, burn, did you get?
Oh, well, that's, that's the question for Wendy. That's because we, we're gonna have to pay the town to run the election.
And then they, they lawyer to tell us either panic or don't panic or, and you're talking to one, I'm talking to one. So there's some legal fees involved here. And then that sort of thing. So we want to, if you can't keep everyone in town, you have to sort of figure out.
Yeah.
How much Wendy, these small mistakes mean.
Right, where would that?
In this big.
That'd be small enough to pull from the budget or?
Yeah, that's, I'm not approving any, um.
I, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't asked Wendy what, what she's going to charge us to run an election for. You know, one of the things that, that this board needs to consider, questions like, are we just going to. Ask Wendy to run an election where she offers absentee ballots and then voting in person? Do you want to mail ballots to everybody? Uh, you know, that's, I mean, that's a consideration anytime we're holding. A vote on Australian ballot. This has to be done by Australian ballot because that's the method used to do it. So it's not like we can have a, a special town meeting where people come in and vote. We have to do it by.
I would think that we would have, um, an Australian ballot in person. We have to, to mirror what we.
We have to. But the question is, do we just, do we just have, do we just notify the town that. For this election on this day, and this has to be worn thirty to forty days out. Uh, ahead of the actual day of election. Did we just tell the town, you can go and get a ballot for Wendy, or you can come in person at this location on this date at this time? Um. I. We, we spent a mail-in ballots out to everybody in the town. That's not how. We don't do that. We don't do that now anyway.
Right, they, the town is shy away from that. This is not the town's money, this.
No, it's not the town's money. I mean, I'm not saying, you know, and it's ultimately up to you. If you think it's, so you haven't figured to mail a ballot to everybody in town. Um, then we can do that. We go, we go to the expense of doing, but.
Um, I liked what you said, but to mirror. The election.
To mirror, I think that if you mirror the election, we should be notified no more. We learned correctly and we say that we're going to ballot on this.
And on Tuesday.
On, right on today, we come to the town hall and we interrupt. Um, because like I said, this is a piece of papers we're using and we need to, we need to be, our treaties probably need to be person to person. Um, there's going to have to be some sort of, of, at least one, I think. Open session where people can come in and, um, not, where, where they're not restrained by our public comment rules, where the forum is open. And they can have the microphone and things, you know. We can, we can talk people out of thinking that, that there's not reasons. And we can point to our state, we can warn our state. And so I think that, that our strategy should be that.
Mm-hmm.
Because our strategy should be to vote, that the vote to happen, the way the vote happened. That we should have a meeting at some point with the town, or was the end of the town, or there they come. And hopefully angry ones come, if they want to come and be angry, and we talk to us first before they just vote. And we have an opportunity to explain that this nine hundred seventy thousand dollars already in the budget, this, the mistake exists here. And. In the.
Should we put a copy of the letter when they're coming in to vote? A copy of the letter in the vote that outlines the mistake and?
Um, maybe, although that may be considered a politician request.
That is, that, I think maybe it would be that.
Yeah, I think that, that that's our one.
I think with the letter, we.
If it's presented. If the document, whether you're voting or not.
This is up, so.
If I would not.
This one's a, the letter that Mark sent us is up on the website now. It's on our official website now. This is a public document, yes. However, people in order are watching. And so if you guys will permit, we can move on here to the next step in this. Um, Mark, I think, and I'd like to, the, 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 I think the first intriguing thing that needs to happen is you need to own this root tree a little bit.
Okay.
I think that you need to. There will be, there's a guy watches after. He tends to watch afterwards. He's still meeting behind, but he's there. Um, but rather than let Andrew McGregor write it up. But I, I would like to march words to, to go to the town, um, whether, whether the letter comes out. I'd like you to tell the town what happened.
Mm-hmm.
And. Um, what we're going to do is fix it, but mainly the way you're owning it to us, the way that you're saying that this is, you know.
Right. So this is the same information in a different form from the memo that I sent you because.
Well, the memo that you sent is intended for us. And so it speaks in a lot of, um, education language and it speaks in a lot of language with that wise and. Um.
Right. We're saying the same thing. I'm just.
Yeah, Mark Tucker, right. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm Mark Tucker, I'm in the state. State, right. And the, we're discounting on me to not make these mistakes. I mean, so, you know. And then let us come in behind to the community and say, we messed up too. We, we, our job to guide is. And.
And we must learn.
And, you know, there's, there's no, there's no excuse for us having these things that, a, a million dollars missing on. We, we are not about public. So. Uh, I think that that is roughly where we are. Do you guys have any more questions for Mark before we step into the executive session?
Something, Mark, I've been thinking about is the structure of the CCSU board and just your job and Mike's job in general and, and whether. You know, errors usually happen if, if people are overworked and if it's, I just, for me. You have a lot, there are a lot of accounts, a lot of money, I mean, with all the different tools. I don't, it brings the question for me, what are. It's a bigger conversation about. The jobs that you have and the structure of CCSU and. You know, are people working until ten o'clock at night? And, uh, you know what I mean? I, I, we don't have to talk about it today, but there's something. To think about possibly as a, a future conversation and. Even with the merger, is the state at some point evaluating mergers and whether they've been successful, whether they're saving money? And I, I guess that's kind of where I went with this too is. Um. Do we have a, a bigger issue that needs to be addressed within a CCSU structure?
Um. It's absolutely the case that this is. One of the more complex supervisory units in state. Um. And. This is a, this is an issue with five separate districts, which are five, four, one and six of them. And the way the budgeting is done. This all comes to at the same time. So I'm not, I'm not saying this to make any excuse, but the reality is, is that I have a GCD time. Of the year from early December through, you know, the end of January technically. Where. The four, this four, this four, this budget, this budget.
We started with CCSU in October. It was just, it's a rush with no, there's not numbers to show. There wasn't. Um, you know, there's, there aren't the state numbers to go. You're trying to build budgets without the state hours and it's.
States have a strong impact with CCSU budgets directly, but they do impact the district budgets. We often don't have those. I would love to have all those numbers on December first because it will give us an entire month of December to work on stuff and we often don't have. It is what it is. I'm not offering it up as an excuse, but you know, it's. You know, think back on this and say, how did, how did this mistake happen? Sometimes wonder why it hasn't happened. But it should not have happened. Mike and I have a system that has worked well for the three years, the four years of you and I have been working together. Um. Propped back and double check. And sometimes, you know, I call him on things, he calls me up. And we work, please. As it is our. So. I first gave it plain saying is that, you know, the board has some culpability, right? We should never put. And that's why I said in my memo, this is, I said, it's my instinct because I'm the superintendent. Um.
So I think to Molly's, to Molly's point is, at the CCSU level. You're too much of a control. The superintendent has too many responsibilities that have gone too wide. And there has been discussed, even we talked about this with us, insisting superintendent or curriculum director with more power where. We can talk about that, but like some, some sort of an idea where somebody else can take on one of the major roles, whether it's curriculum. Or whether it's discipline or whether it's HR, you know, some of the, some of the control goes elsewhere because there's so many things to do. And because in, in average months where nothing goes awry, you're working a full-time job and you're not going to do, um, the needs.
Yeah, I mean, you know, when I, when I came on board in two thousand, I've seen the SU board prior to my showing on board. And I've got to request a backboard. Um, and when I came on board, my initial response to that was, I don't think that's. Um. You know, that's a discussion, you know. I think I would say that's a conversation for the SU board to have about staffing and whether they think. You know, we are understaffed, uh, either in my office or the finance office. Um, you know, uh, Mike's got a solid team of people. Would we give another. Person in there to help him in his busy times? Or, I mean, are there times when I wish I had an extra set of hands to do, if I'm involved in, absolutely. You know, but, and there are some things coming down the pipe that have not brought to the SU board yet that have driven after that point. The agency says that we are supposed to centralize facility management at the SU level. That, that's something that's on my, you know, list of things to bring up with the board in the fall. You know, before we go to budget centralizing. So there's the facility directors at the SU and then head custodians. So that's going to be. Political issues for a couple of different, that I used to have in my own, wanting to own facilities. But it's a conversation that we have to have at the SU. Um. So, yeah, I mean, there's. I certainly have my days when I'm conflicted, but just have two more hours ahead. Somebody else to hand this off to.
So I think, yeah, like I said, it's a conversation with the SU board.
Yeah.
And we'll see, we'll see when it comes up and we can discuss that at that level. And, you know, we, we have no control of that, so. So in this time, uh, we want to work on one of these mistakes. We want to work on getting the pathway over. We want to find out what. Sort of cost we're looking at. We want to find out the sort of timeframe we're looking at and we want to be effective on all that as soon as we can.
You have, so if we have to warn our forty days in advance. I mean, we're not ready to do it today, but if we did it today, the election would be in August. That's election would be in August. I don't want to, I don't think we should, should run this, delay this in line to the beginning of the story. So you got to find, get on the timeline to get this. Done. Hopefully this is going to go through on the first attempt.
Yeah, as soon as we can. As soon as we can, as soon as we can correct, you know, the public and soon as we know that it's legal. We start telling people what happened. We start telling people what happened tomorrow. We start telling people what happened tonight. We start telling people we're wrong tonight. Right.
It would be perfect to know.
It would be thoughtful because we don't have, we don't have time to get into.
There's a lot of things that we can do while that timeline is going.
Right. We got to get the timeline. So forty, whatever thirty or forty days from now, find that out and then we'll come back.
Okay. Um.
We're meeting on the twenty seventh of it, you know, if, if something comes up, twenty seventh is a good time to get some information to us. We can pass that. We're going to, we're going to scramble the meeting. We will, the twenty seventh of what are you on? But if, you know, if we need to scramble the meeting, scramble the meeting. Yeah, the, the state is just allowed to be way out. How quickly we can meet and how virtually we can meet. So the people can pull themselves off of their various schedules. Because the faces in the.
So what I was, just to make sense, so what I wrote down, three things. The question about, do we need to have a certain number of votes? And I'll confirm that. I think the answer is no. Just the votes you get, but I won't do some of that. Um, I need to have a conversation with Wendy. And get it, get her, you know, hurry and fit on her process and how. She wants to run this emergency, can run it. And, um, I'll draft a letter to the, to go, to go to the Congress.
Probably two versions of the letter. Um, one also that wrote to school community so that they know that now is the time that we need to support. That. Does that make sense to the school community? This situation has happened?
Maybe a more personal, you know, to the school community, you know, coming up to vote and. Yes.
Okay.
I think that's just, that's not politics and that's just an intrigue.
And then, Mark, I had written down what did the mistake cost? Finding out the total cost.
That's a part of the one you.
The one.
Oh, so low count. A low count.
We're, they're too picky to work. The election. I don't have that fun with.
Um, but you're in the right room.
If they was, we, we need the neighborhood of, of five votes, three. But keep it over four in total votes. So we need to do. Uh, I'll start with a bit of people in the face as soon as I can and start telling them what, start telling them what we. Um. And again, this is a budget fact. This is a budget that we operate, this is a budget we defended. It's just a mistake. You understand? Anything further? For the superintendent?
I appreciate that you're coming out and going at Mark. Thank you for coming out.
If, I mean, this is, this is, it's hard. This is one.
I mean, I, you know, when I, when I first, I took off in my mind. Because it was like, oh my God, this is.
Yeah, so.
It's a public job and everything that's out there.
Yeah. You know. And I know that there, it, this can, there are particular sensitivities in this community going back long time. Are going to come into play. Possibly there are certain people in the sound that doesn't matter what. They're going to spring me up and maybe you too, Clayton, I don't know.
One of the things I said when I got into the board, I am not even embarrassed with town. I'm standing in front of you. I'm not going to embarrass the town. Um, I like to laugh at other towns whenever they do something stupid. And now we're going to get laughed at. I mean, I, I like to think that we're doing a good job, um, and dealing with the bad. So, yeah, this is. I'm wondering this. Yeah.
It's not, if, if you. I hope. This can be on record. It's not. The person, it's the position. People hate the position of. Or chair, superintendent, principal, um, you know, whatever the manager level is. Not the person. That is agreeing as much as. The position. Whoever sits in that chair, whichever one of us, that's person they're not going to agree with.
Mm-hmm. But then how you comport yourself especially, yeah. And so.
The person's going to step out of, going to get out of the chair and say, hey, I'm a person, not a position. This is what I get.
And that's what we're asking you to do. That's what we're asking you to do. Right. Uh, so I think that's where we are. I think I'm ready to go into the executive session, but we're going to come on the, uh, post it. Cause I got, I don't believe we're enough to have to come back. Public comment?
Uh, to adjourn, we have to come out of executive session.
So I think that we're going to.
You're meant to use that as bubble again.
So I think, I, I think because. We are not in a position as a, as a dandelion board taking action coming out of this executive session in any way. We're not going in there with the intention of taking any action. We're going in there so that I can tell you some things that the lawyer told me. And so that I can tell you some things that I've learned. And so that we can talk about some things. And then we're going to come out of that and we're going to adjourn the meeting. I think we can do that off the video. So I think the video can end it.
Um.
I'm not. I think my, my recommendation is we're going into the section, whatever conversation you want to have. You come out of executive session and make a statement that it's our action to take.
I can do that, but, um, I'm going to ask you to.
And why?
That's, that's the, this is what we do the thing. I need to talk to these people.
Okay.
So, um, I'm going to, I'm going to talk to these people.
Okay.
That's why I'm, what I'm saying is.
Okay.
I don't know that, um, you can put it back on me, but I, I may not start the recording. But you can.
That's okay. I think legally we don't need the recording as long as we adjourn, I think as long as we adjourn and activate.
Back on things, I.
Oh, okay.
I don't think we need that.
You know what, it's, but we, we, I can't, I can't wait. On the record.
Don't mind if I ask why you don't want, want me in the session?
Uh, yeah.
Because if you're going to talk about me, I think I have a right to be there.
Uh, we are, what we're going to talk about is, um. Some aspects of this. And how, where are we taking from here? And, um. How this affects, um. The superintendent evaluation and who that assigned to the superintendent evaluation. And, um, one of my members asked if we could speak without you. I think I was in my rights to have that conversation without you here.
Okay.
And.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I, when I spoke to Chris Leopold, I said, can I go into an executive session with the board and just abort it? He said, yes, just abort.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That's fine.
Don't take it personal. I need to talk to these people.
Okay. So what do you want me to do? You want me to stop the recording now?
I think so. What I, what I want to say now is, I'm going to move on to public comment for a second. Um, is there any public comment? Hearing none, I'll move on. I would, um, I've already. Hearing none, I'll move on, I would, um I've already added to the agenda to go into the executive session. We're gonna go into the executive session, like I said, we can't take impacts, we're not out of the executive session. It will retake more action, I'll indicate that at that point, and then we'll adjourn, but that will be on the video, because I don't know how to work the video.
I think that's okay.
Yeah, so we're gonna, that will be in a few minutes, but that is our, that is our plan here, the executive, the executive session. We come back out, we're going to. Okay, and just checking that it's a curious and we watched the.
Okay, so I'm gonna stop the recording.
That'd be great.